Yeah, the board's right here. So at 7:30, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Roll call. Danny?
Here.
Damon?
Here.
Kimberly?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Michelle?
Here.
Anna?
Here.
And Deb? And I am here. The meeting has been properly noticed and certified?
Yes, it has been.
Please join me in the pledge. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Somebody wanna read our mission statement?
I can do that.
Okay, Michelle?
The Mount Horvath Area School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Michelle. Do I have an approval of the agenda?
Second.
Jeff and Leah seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the April 18 regular board meeting minutes?
Remove.
Second.
And Michelle, Jeff made the motion and Michelle seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Addressing the board, school news.
I just have one thing. Last Thursday, we held our first legislator forum, right here at the middle school steproom. And that was kind of one of the goals of the Community and Legislative Engagement Committee, which was a new committee this year. One of the goals that we had for the year was to try to host one of those. So we had Senator John Urbanbach and Representative Santi Pope here. And we had student council students who had written questions ahead of time. And Anna was one of them. And they read their questions, came down and asked both of our legislators their questions. And then the committee had several questions as well. And then we had some questions from the audience. But for our first time, I thought it went really, really well.
It was well-attended. We had almost thirty people, I think.
Yeah. Great.
Yeah.
Was it recorded?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
It was videotaped.
I also have some school news here. Last Saturday was the state solon ensemble competition. And we had a lot of people from Mount Horvath go, and a lot of people get good ratings, ones and twos, a lot of those. Additionally, there's an orchestra concert this Thursday and a band concert next Thursday. As we're winding down the school year, we have a lot of music concerts coming up. AP exams are going on this week and next week. There was a track meet last Friday, an invitational at Fort Atkinson that the girls varsity track meet won. And we have conference next Friday for track as well. As far as clubs, nothing much is happening. It's the end of the year, everybody's kind of winding down. And the other sports are getting ready to go into conference as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other school news? Okay, citizen comments. Jackie, did we have anybody sign up for citizen comments? Anybody that would like to make a citizen's comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to personnel transactions. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jeff made the motion, Leah seconded.
I have a question. 'Cause I see Mr. Mesalores down here as a seventh and eighth grade... Sorry, you're right. I thought somebody else just... Maybe I should just have this in closed session.
Move that to a closed session.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that looks with him either.
So, number four, twenty-three. If I could have that moved... How do I make that motion, Jeff?
You just asked for it to be moved to closed session.
Thank you. Could I have that be moved to a closed session, please?
Will you amend your...
I'll amend to have that moved to closed session. Whoever's second.
I agree.
Leah?
Yeah. I was just curious.
Motion on the table is from Jeff to approve all but number twenty... Section four, number twenty-three, to closed session. Leah seconded the motion. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can we have Dr. Salerno? You were going to make an announcement before the consent agenda.
Yeah, could I ask if Michael and Paul would be willing to join us here? First, a couple items, if you don't mind. Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity just to say hello to you. Before we introduce these two fine folks next to me, I would be remiss if I didn't mention on tonight's board agenda is the resignation of an employee who's done a lot of great things in her short period of time. And I think you know who I'm referring to when I say that. That's Chris Sutter parent. I've been fortunate to work with her both as an applicant for a position, but then also in these short couple of weeks, as we work to mine these fine talent here that we're gonna recommend to you tonight. So, Chris, I want to thank you publicly for all you've done for our kids, all that's gone noticed and unnoticed. We appreciate your leadership. So, thank you so very much. One of my favorite things I get to do is I get to hire great talent and recommend great talent to you tonight. And that's exactly what we have before you this evening. Michael Warbowski is currently serving as the principal at Kokana High School and has been doing so for a number of years. We went through a thorough hiring process, thanks to the great work of some of our staff as well as other key committee members or board members were also part of that. And I know that we're gonna be recommending just an absolutely fantastic candidate to the board this evening. And I'm so pleased also to offer our recommendation for Paul, Paul Christensen. Paul has been serving as an associate principal in Fort Atkinson for seven years, Paul. And one of the things I appreciate about both of these people is that in their conversations, more private, I think, than anything, sorry, is they've all... They talk to me about their readiness to lead in a new way. They're hungry. They're hungry for change, and they're ready to complement an already exemplary administrative team that you've pulled together. And I think they're really gonna be a fine addition to our administrative family. So, thank you for your consideration of their candidacy. I know that Paul, bless his heart, he has a beautiful family, who we had a wonderful reception for this afternoon at the high school, very well-attended. But understandably, with a twenty-two-month-old and a six-month-old, right?
Not quite.
Not quite.
She's almost six months, yeah.
We all remember those kids, time to go home and stuff. But I know that they wish they could be here, but understandably, we'll have you have an opportunity to visit with them shortly. But I know, Michael, you were also able to have your beautiful wife Tammy here with us tonight.
Welcome, Tammy.
So, is it okay if they just say a few words, if that's all right?
Sure.
Michael?
I just wanna say thank you very much for the opportunity. I look forward to the moment I get a chance to start, July 1, being the principal of Mount Horvath High School, to strengthen and grow the traditions that we have here at the school district. So, again, thank you for this opportunity. And yes, it was a very thorough job. Background check and everything, I was just wow. Thank you again. And I just wanna say thank you as well. I just continue, over the last few weeks, as I've looked to move to Mount Horvath, continue to hear just great things, not about the school, but just the community as a whole. For example, this morning, I talked to a math consultant who just couldn't speak more highly of Mount Horvath. And I hadn't even brought up the fact that I was leaving for it, but I guess the news is out. And so, she has a daughter that lives here, and they chose to live here. And I just think everyone so far has been so welcoming, and that's just really, really appreciated by myself and my family and all of us that are coming here. Just really, really looking forward to getting involved in all of the things that Mount Horvath has, not only in this building, but the other buildings in the community as a whole. So, very, very excited.
Join me in congratulating them.
Thank you.
We've had a long drive home, so we're gonna let them go. But thank you so much for being with me.
Welcome aboard. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks. And I wanna reiterate Dr. Salerno's comments about Chris. She's done a wonderful job here. Thank you, Chris, for serving here at the school district. We really appreciate the work you've put in. Okay, now move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody want anything pulled out? Motion to approve. Leah made the motion?
Second.
Danny seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Discussion items, mental health action team update.
We have had just a tremendous response from the community and staff on volunteers to be a part of this new work. And we are... I just sent out an email last Friday, and we're trying to come up with dates in the next couple of weeks to have our first meeting. So, we, like I said, it's just been great. We have a lot of community people who have a lot of background in mental health issues. So, it's really gonna be good, I think. And Teresa's already got a couple ideas for our first meeting, so we're ready to get started.
Great. Does anybody have any questions about the action team? Okay, moving on to the action items. Consideration of bids for, I guess we'll take these one at a time, high school cafeteria food service equipment.
I'm the food service director. Now, so my dietetic intern, Erin, will be... So, those of you on the finance committee will recall that Scott brought a letter to federal regulations limit the amount of fund balance that the food service fund fifty can hold. So, right now, we've exceeded three months' operating expenses, so they're asking that we spend that down. So, we have two separate purchases that we would like to make. We've looked through the district and kind of prioritized our needs and looked at equipment. That was failing. So, the first one I'm recommending is the purchase from Kavanaugh. You can see my bids there. The only thing this number doesn't include is hookups. And then the combi oven that we're purchasing will probably require some plumbing and electrical work, as well as a filter. But we won't know that till it's actually installed. But it won't be extremely costly. So, that is number one. The second, you've probably got the layout. We've been working with ISI, which is a company that provides cafeteria and restaurant design. We've been working on it since last fall, so it put a lot of effort into us. But they've come up with a cafeteria remodel for the high school. I've talked with the principals, custodians, and everything at the high school. We really like the design. We really like the colors. It's gonna increase our capacity, seating capacity, and it's also going to do a complete transformation, which won't be extremely difficult. So, they were only able to give me a budget quote on this, so I'm just asking that if you would approve the number not to exceed that... The purchase not to exceed that number. And again, this would all be out of the food service fund fifty fund balance, so it would not affect the fund ten balance. And all of these items too, that we would be purchasing, are totally transferable to a new space if that happened in the future.
Michelle, can I ask how much capacity do we gain with this design?
We gain, it's... Let's see. It's only twenty-six seats, but some of the tables are standing height tables. So, if they work out well, I think we can add a lot more, 'cause we could put them in the doorways and other spaces where they could be moved. But they could also be used at games and things like that. They would have like a biking move on it there. So...
Thank you.
And once we get them in there, we might be able to purchase more, depending on the space.
Did we get three bids for it?
Because of this company, I have... I got one other bid, but this company is very unique in what they do. They're new at the school cafeteria game, I guess. They were more restaurant and fast food design. They did like the... They do rebranding and things like that. So, they did the new McDonald's and the new KFC Taco Bell. So, it's a completely different service than any other vendor was able to give me. So, I wasn't even able... People told me they wouldn't even give me a bid. So, I have one on regular institutional cafeteria tables, but it's nothing like this project. So, this project also includes a designer to help us with color schemes and signage and things like that.
Motion to approve both the equipment and the tables. Second. Can I ask that we take these separately, because the second one is a not to exceed?
Oh, sure. So, I'll do the equipment first.
Second.
Should the first one also be a not to exceed, since there was some plumbing and so forth that might need to happen?
I think the plumbing and so forth will be able to be covered in our next year's budget, because it will be sold minor, and it would probably happen over the summer. So, I think it's gonna be minimal.
Okay, Leah made the motion, Danny seconded. All those in favor say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. And the second one for the high school cafeteria tables, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve not to exceed the dollar amount.
Second. Jeff made the motion, Danny seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Michelle. Consideration of Future Problem Solving International Conference in East Lansing, Michigan.
So, I'm representing Christine Carney. And we had a student, Patty Duncan, who's in the back, move on to internationals for future problem solvers at the middle school level. And when I heard something, she's playing my role every year. She's pretty good at what she does, so I hope to get that into the budget permanently, it looks like. But the international conference is in Michigan, so it's costing the state companies. I just wanted to make you aware of that. She and Christine, I think her mom are gonna be too, on attending June 2nd to the 5th. And they, in the past, have traveled with Hamilton Middle School in Madison. We shared costs with transportation in that way. So, there's company labor to notify you and hope for approval for this trip.
Second. Jeff and Danny... Sorry, I'm gonna hear Danny first. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Enjoy your trip. Good luck. Check out the University of Michigan State while you're there. You staying at the dorms?
In the dorms.
Enjoying. Consideration of Employee Handbook, updated as of July 1, 2016.
Okay, in your board docs, you should have a draft of an update dated July 1, 2016 of the handbook, which also includes the faculty compensation model at the back, which is an appendix to that currently. There are... The modifications to the handbook itself are highlighted, and those have been reviewed by both the faculty and the support staff group. Some apply to both, and some apply just to one or the other group. And the compensation model changes, they're pretty minor. It's just kind of tweaking some language and clarifying some language, maybe that led to some questions from staff. So, those have all been, like I said, reviewed by both groups as well. And that only does apply to the faculty group. Some are kind of the... Some of the major things are... We can... Staff can now carry over two personal days. We do have an employee conduct. And this, I think, maybe a couple months ago, we brought a staff ethics policy for review, and it was decided to take that to personnel. Instead of actually having a staff ethics policy, we kind of looked at some neighboring school districts and created an employee conduct, basically, section in our handbook. And that's on page eight, which applies to all of our employees. So, it kind of encompassed a lot of the same thing without making it a separate policy. So, those are kind of some major things. There really weren't a lot of really big, significant changes. Maybe one of the more major ones are the subpay, which is the last section of the handbook, starting on page forty-one. We, in the past, we didn't actually have the subpay listed in the handbook. We did have a substitute section. Last year, we added that to our handbook when we revised our handbook quite significantly. But we didn't actually have the pay for subs in there. And we've had, I think... Scott, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we had the same pay for substitute teachers for eleven years. Something like that.
Well, I can't verify eleven, but I can verify seven.
And Will might know too, I don't know. But it was quite a significant...
Maybe the exact number was a little long.
Yes, it's been quite a long time. So... And we do have some difficulty getting subs. So, we try to maybe be a little more competitive. So, we are increasing that from a hundred dollars to a hundred and ten dollars a day. We also, for subs who... Kind of almost like a substitute loyalty. So, subs who sub in our district, after they've subbed twenty days for us, their pay goes up to a hundred and twenty dollars, so they get a ten-dollar bump up. And it's kind of to kind of reward them for being a kind of a loyal sub to our district. One other thing we did, page thirty-one, which we met with the support staff group last week, and we talked about this as a change. In the past, the support staff has only had one year probation, and then they had just cause. But to keep them consistent with the faculty group, now they will have three years, but it only affects new support staff members. So, their probationary period only changes for anyone hired July 1 or later. So, any current staff, that doesn't really affect them at all. So, to be consistent with the faculty group, now they will have the same period of time on probation before they become a just cause employee. So, those are kind of some of the major highlights. I don't know, Chris and Scott have been involved with this process, and Will has been involved with it as well, from the faculty group.
Just a note that there is a few changes that are in sort of the retirement payout. And that's just because the subpay changed. We wanted to keep the retirement sick leave dollar amount the same. So, when we increased the subpay to one-ten, our sick leave benefit for retirement, we changed that from twenty to thirty dollars to leave that number consistent for budget. Does that make sense?
And actually, pay for unused sick leave for support staff retirees on page thirty-five, there's a big section in yellow, but that is to be consistent with really what we had done in the past. Somehow, it got altered last year, and so it's really going back to what we have been So, I didn't really change it, but we just kind of had to pull that language forward.
Motion to approve. Second. Leah made a motion to approve. Danny seconded. Does anybody have any additional questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. High school HVAC project update and consideration of additional asbestos abatement.
Our project is underway, and much... The fittings in the tunnels, I believe, have been abated. But in the process, they realized that some... Well, actually, all the insulation and the water pipe in the tunnels at the high school have asbestos in them. And it probably wouldn't have been an issue, but some of it has been damaged. So, we have... We need to abate that area so that it's safe for our contractors to be down there working in the tunnels, which some of the HVAC work is going to take place in the tunnels. So, we do need to contain that, those areas where that's happened. But in consideration of that, since we have our asbestos abatement going on now in the boiler room, and so our Robinson Brothers are there doing abatement, we thought maybe it would be a good time to get the rest of that insulation that has asbestos in it removed at this time, instead of doing it at a later time. The cost of just removal of it, as you can see by the company who's doing our abatement, is twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars. They do also have in their quote for re-insulation, but I don't know if we were going to get some other bids on that.
North American Mechanical will give us an alternate bid.
Yeah. So, we don't really... We aren't really ready to do that, but we could have the asbestos insulation removed now while they're there working on the project. And if you look, there also is kind of an update on the budget where we are with the HVAC project. So, we do have, you know, a little over two-hundred and thirty thousand remaining as a balance. So, I think maybe this is a good time, since they're down working. And I think anytime, right now, if someone goes to work in the tunnels, we have to give them a notice that there's asbestos in the tunnels. And, you know, even if we do contain the areas that are, you know, that we absolutely have to, I think anytime we can remove the asbestos, it's a good idea.
It's gonna have to be done sooner or later anyway. And it is part of this project. And it just... It needs to be done.
And I imagine, if we ask for two other bids to keep with the three bid, nobody's gonna give us as low a bid as this, because they're already in there working.
They're already mobilized. And that's the other part of it, is if we wanted to have somebody come back and do it at some later date, it's going to cost more because of the setup time.
Robinson Brothers has kept with the original unit price all through this. They've not... They've always... Whatever they bid for fitting, per lineal foot, has not changed through this whole process. So, they're there, they're ready to go. In fact, I'm gonna drive across the street and tell them to continue to go, you know, based on your say-so.
Move to approve. Second. Okay, Michelle made the motion. Leah seconded. Do we have to wait for Danny to come back?
No, I think we can have the majority.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, we've got some policies. These are second readings. Yep. First one is Board Member Compensation Policy number one sixty-four. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion by Michelle, seconded by Leah. Are there any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? One sixty-four passes. Second one is Academic Excellence Scholarship Policy four sixty-one. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Michelle. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number three, Budget Preparation Policy six twenty-one.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Michelle. Anybody have any questions on this policy?
This is the fun budget stuff, let's see some smiles.
Scott's got a big smile.
Okay, motion on the table by Jeff, seconded by Michelle. All those in favor say aye. 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 Okay, next one is Budget Hearings and Reports Policy number six twenty-two. Move to approve. Second. Michelle... Leah was the second. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Okay, the next one, Budget Implementation Policy six twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Michelle. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Okay. The rule of policies, F, consideration of 2016, 2017 fee schedule. I believe this was in our board docs.
Yes.
Were there any changes this year?
I think maybe the only change is meal, some of the prices.
The hour card price.
Yeah.
An extra entry?
Yes. You can see from year to year, because they're all, three years are basically there, so.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Leah, seconded by Jeff. Questions?
Is there any cap on athletic fees during the school year? Like $75 per sport up to, or a family limit or anything, or is it exactly as described here?
Right now, it says exactly as described.
Do we have a policy if people struggle to meet all the fees?
Well, the athletic fee is waived for families on free and reduced, and families that are having financial issues, they contact us. We set up payment plans if we need to, and so we do have.
Is there a scholarship application for that?
There has not been.
Okay, motion on the table by Leah, seconded by Jeff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Consideration of Timeline for Potential Referendum.
Okay, in your board information, you have kind of pros and cons of going to a fall, which would be in November 2016 referendum, or going to the spring, which would be in April 2017. So we've kind of gone through back and forth, what are some positives to, from one to another, and that's kind of what's laid out for you. At the April 4th board meeting, we actually tried, kind of talked about the schedule, like, so we'd have to do this by this date, this by this date, if we did a November or April. So those have been looked at, but these were reviewed. I didn't hear back from Matt. I was thinking you meant the timeline, those timelines, not the pros and cons, but I did ask him, and I haven't heard back, so.
Danny, do you remember at the meeting, there was some discussion about this timeline and some additional pros and cons that were added to the list?
Additional besides what's on here?
Yes. Like, I.
No, I don't remember specifically off the top of my head, but what I would say was that there was a lot of discussion. It was, you know, not a discussion that just took a few minutes, it went on for a while, with a lot of input from Bray as well as Bill, the gentleman who's ultimately going to write the survey. And it was pretty clear that both Bray and Bill felt that there were more advantages to waiting till April, as opposed to pushing the limits and going for November. We also, after this whole discussion was over, asked for a show of hands, and keep in mind, this is a big group of people who have been meeting for months now, and lots and lots of discussion, hours and hours worth of discussion about many different things. We asked for a show of hands to see, you know, how the group felt about whether we should go for November, April, and it was overwhelmingly April, I mean, with maybe a couple of exceptions.
So I guess at this time, we're looking for a motion for referendum timing.
I move that we wait till April.
Second.
Motion by Danny, seconded by Michelle, for an April of 2017 referendum. Anybody have any questions, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. H, Consideration of Facility Plan Survey Strategy.
That was another item discussed as well. In that discussion, one of the things Bill Foster from School Perceptions had, we had kind of talked about it at the last meeting, maybe doing like a base plan, so saying kind of, these are the major needs that we see as a group, a steering committee group, and then kind of ask the community about, what would you support, this is another option, or this is another option. And now, after more thought, both Bray and Bill from School Perceptions believes that we should actually not do a base plan, because we are, the steering committee, even after spending months and months and months of looking at this, we're not totally united saying that this is, this is what we absolutely have to do. We're, there's, you know, some feeling that this is what we absolutely have to do, and another feeling that this is what we have to absolutely do. So we're going to kind of, we feel like we want to let the community decide. That's kind of the route we're going right now.
Yes. The district has a lot of needs, you know, all told, the estimate is around $110 million, and we can only do so much at once, and it's true, even the, among the members of the steering committee, there is not consensus on what we should do, and so what, again, what Bill and what Bray said, which made a lot of sense to me, they said, listen, if there were an obvious base plan to start from, and this group were in agreement about what that base plan should be, and, you know, for instance, in a district where there were not quite so many, as many needs as we have, and the starting place were more obvious, then it would make sense to approach the survey from that place. But given the fact that there are so many things that we need, and given the fact that there is not consensus even amongst our little group, after so many months of discussion and analysis, it makes more sense to go this other route.
And it's kind of the way the board originally looked at it. We're looking at a master plan. So if you look at across the district, we have a lot of needs in different buildings, and like Danny said, it amounts to approximately $110 million, just to look at our school buildings. When you look at that, you have to start thinking, well, we need this at the IC, we need this at the middle school, and some of us feel maybe the high school's the highest priority, and some people maybe feel that ELC is the highest priority. But we recognize that they're both big needs, as well as some work at the middle school and some more minor work at the IC, and I think we need to look at it as an overall district plan, and then get some input and feedback from the community on what their thoughts are, as far as looking at all these needs across the district, what do you see as? But not that, this is only Phase 1, and that's kind of one of the things that are really stressing.
So the survey's gonna be used to educate the community on exactly what all of these needs are, and then the survey will break things down into chunks, and then the community will be asked to rank those chunks in order of importance.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, because it's on an action item, so do we really need a motion on?
We probably don't so much. We didn't need a motion for the timeline. If we were going to look at November, we really needed to start moving forward at a much quicker pace.
Right.
When, I think when they get a little further along in the survey design, at some point, it'll come before the board, but, uh-oh, we need to vote on that right now.
Yeah, I don't think this really needs a motion.
No, it's more of an update on that part. We did have the one area that did need a vote, but, so that's where we are right now, and now.
And I would add that while, there is no consensus within the steering committee where the, how things should be prioritized, there was consensus that this is the better way to approach the survey.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, agreed.
Scott, could I ask?
Sure.
Scott, at the next finance meeting, can you sort of lay out when our current bonds come due, so we can sort of look at the timing? Thank you. So we can, the finance committee is ready when they start talking numbers to us.
You're surveying, or you're intending to survey all residents in the school district? Or just parents, all residents?
No, all residents, not just parents. Each household will receive the survey.
It would be an easier time if just the parents voted.
No, in fact, the parents within the district are in the minority, as far as voters go, so it's really important that everybody be surveyed.
But the majority of our steering committee people are parents, so they are just so passionate after seeing the buildings and the needs, they are very passionate about the need to move forward on something, but we really need to figure out what.
Will there be, I've talked, I heard about how powerful the tours were. Once the survey goes out, will there be an additional round of tours for the public?
Right, we will have open houses at each building on different occasions to allow people to come in and kind of go through the same thing as well. They have, like, one thing Bray has really stressed, that it's hard to get people in, so we're gonna try to do pictures, you know, as well.
Possibly even an embedded video, it's been talked about. We don't know financially if these, you know, it's gonna be usable, but, like, I think a video of what the passing periods of a high school look like, or during lunch, would be probably pretty interesting.
Kind of like a stop motion, we talked about a stop motion type of video, where you kind of, there's nobody, and then there's one kid, and then there's like 75 kids all right there, and it's, yeah, I think it would be great for the community to see what that actually looks like and feels like for the kids.
I bet we have some kids who could do that.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think we probably do. It's a great idea.
So we're trying, I mean, as much information as we can get out, the better. That will help them make a decision on priorities too, by seeing and hearing, like, really looking at what's going on in each of our buildings.
Well, I guess if we don't need a motion on it, then.
No, we don't. But as the work continues on the survey, you will be updated on that and where things are with it.
Okay, 8A, citizen comments. Do we have any? Bill?
I would just like to, on behalf of the faculty, say first of all, thank you for passing the employee handbook and the pay model, but more importantly, I would just like to thank you for allowing us to have the collaborative relationship we have. We certainly aren't required to by any means, but we are very appreciative of your willingness to be regularly with us, to have dialogue with us, and to sort of problem solve together, if you could create some much nicer atmosphere for the entire district, and we just very appreciative of that, that can continue to be.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Seeing none. Board Communication to the Community, 9A. Anybody, anything they would like?
Timing of the, timing of the referendum?
The policies that were passed?
HVAC.
Fee schedules?
Fee schedule.
Did you get all those down?
I'm writing them down.
The handbook's probably not so much for the community, but I will definitely send it out to the staff, so, not that they haven't seen it, but so that they know it's been approved, and this is what it looks like starting July 1.
Maybe an update about the mental health action team?
Yeah. And we still can take more volunteers, like I said, we've had a great response, but.
That's wonderful. And then with the HVAC update, can you include the asbestos abatement, and that that will continue?
Yeah.
I know I've received some questions from people about the things outside of the high school, and wondering what they are.
Windsock. Things floating out there, yeah.
I think we have to, almost every time we bring it up, we have to mention again that air quality's being monitored at all times.
Yes.
And that it's safe for the students to be in the building while this is happening.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, future agenda items, 10A are listed, scheduled next meeting is listed. I will now entertain a motion to enter closed session to consider Board Member Compensation concern, Administrator concern, and Transportation concern per Section 19.85, Part 1, CF, and part of those counts and statutes. Leah made the motion. Jeff seconded. Roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Leah? Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So it'll take five minutes.